Okay, I'd like to call the order back, the meeting back to order with an open work session. This time, I'd like to have representatives from the National Folk Festival and the Salisbury Marathon up here to give us an update. Are you by yourself?
It looks like it, yes. Thank you for having me.
Yes ma'am, introduce yourself.
My name is Caroline O'Hare. I am the local manager for the National Folk Festival. Great, so I wanted to just give you an update of where we're at since our last meeting. Things are speeding along. We are firming up our locations for our stages. We have seven areas that we will be utilizing for performances, ranging from the new Ample Theater, which just broke ground, which was a great event, and moving over to the new Times Lot. And if you guys all know this already, you can just let me know, but if you don't know, the new Times Lot will be another musical stage. Then over to the Market Street area will be the Family Area and a Family Stage. In the large city parking lot between Market Street and Main Street, there will be another musical stage. Our marketplace, our festival marketplace, where we'll have juried artists selling their arts and goods, will be in the parking lot across from Angelo's, so that little sort of indentation of the large parking lot. Then we will have another musical stage close on Division, close to the GOV, close to this building. We will also have a Folklife Area across the river, along the green area, along the Wycomico River, close to the bridge. And then the parking, not parking lot, the grass area near 50 will be the Folklife Stage. And then we are planning on having the Dance Pavilion in the City Lot on the other side of Brew River. So we have been working with a capital improvements list that the NCTA has given us, and we've been working with Amanda Pollak and with other city officials to make sure that we are up to par. I know Tom Stevenson has created a three-phase power drop plan to go over the three years of the national festivals, so that we have hardline power in specific areas, which he's been working with the NCTA to find exactly where those power drops need to be and what needs to come out of it. Let's see. We are announcing the first eight performers today at four o'clock, and then each month after that, we will announce another four to six. We, I'm trying to think of what else. We are working still with Chief Hoppus and Chief Duncan and other emergency management people to continue with our action plan, so that we are prepared for whatever emergencies come our way. I know we still need to bring other people into that fold, and that will happen. We are locating, I think we are, we've identified two possible satellite parking lots that we'll be using, each with about 1,300, 1,200 or 1,300 parking spaces. One is Shorebirds, and the other one is the Civic Center. We prefer Shorebirds because it's a straight shot on 50. That is going to then, of course, take additional planning, because I believe there are three different, three different police sheriff and folks that deal with people entering or exiting Shorebirds, depending on which road they come out on. So that's something that will be, need to be coordinated. Right now, I'm working with Scott Kolb and with Brad at Shore Transit to map out routes for the shuttles, drop-off points, how many people they feel they'll need. I know that right now, it's budgeted for about 11,000 for the full three days of the festival. That's running an hour before and an hour after the festival begins and ends. Those are shuttles that run for 10 minutes. Every 10 minutes, there's a shuttle in 30-minute loops. We feel having that additional parking spot, space for people, as well as, we've been working with the hospital to use Garage A and their overflow lots, and also our parking lot in the middle of the footprint, which is the large parking garage. We feel like we are finding places for people, so that they'll be able to come to the festival with ease, and it won't be too much of a jam-up. We're hoping that, again, that shuttle will be heavily utilized. Do you have any questions, so that I'm not jumping all over the place, that maybe I could...
Right, you discussed the National Folk Festival, you haven't touched the marathon yet, have you?
Sure.
Caroline is our local manager for the Folk Festival, and only the Folk Festival.
Well, before you get started on that...
And he's gonna start on the marathon.
Yeah, before you get started on the marathon, let's see if there are any questions, so we don't jump around.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question, Caroline.
Yes.
There are a number of state and government offices which are required to remain open during the festival. Have you addressed those, and how are you handling those openings?
Um...
Well, the Health Department has to be open.
Well, so Friday night, the Folk Festival doesn't begin until six o'clock, and then Saturday and Sunday, the Health Department is not open to visitors on the weekends.
You can speak into the microphone.
My phone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I just, real quick, about Health Department? I've already spoken with Diane Wall, we spoke a few months ago, as far as having enough inspectors to do inspections, both on Friday and Saturday, for those vendors that are only going to be there on Saturday and Sunday. I haven't talked to Diane about ours, but I can get that information back to you. I know that with our action plan that is being led by Chief Hoppus and Chief Duncan, I know that agencies are on deck that weekend, but I don't have specifics for you, and I will definitely get you that information.
If you would, please. I know the FBI, of course, will be open, and they are located downtown, and there's somebody else that has to have access to their offices. And I'm sure there are a number of other agencies. So if you would get back to us, I'd like to know how they would handle those.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Do you have a question? Go ahead. I heard when you first started, you were anticipating, you know, 150,000 people.
We're anticipating 150,000 by year three. By this first year, we're looking at 60,000 to 80,000 is a conservative guess, and that's based on historical data from past festivals and locations to populous cities around us. And then second year, it doubles to about 132,000, and then year three, they're looking at 150,000.
Now, the stage you're building currently, the new one...
The Ample Theater, yeah.
I read where that holds 650 people.
I believe they've extended the sides, so it's less of a, it's more of a half-circle now, so I believe it's actually gonna hold more than that.
How many?
I do not know how many that holds.
The last estimate I saw was 700 to 750.
Pardon me?
700 to 750 was the last...
Okay, and how many stages do you have that will hold that many? Does all your stages hold that many people?
Yes, well, the Family Area is a smaller stage, and the Folklife Area is a smaller stage, but the rest of the stages would be at that number and above, well above.
So...
So, for example, the Dance Pavilion, probably around 5, 6,000.
The Dance Pavilion, where is that gonna be?
Yes, on the other side of Brew River, in the city parking lot.
What I'm hearing is you're having a lot more people than you have...
Spaces, yes. And people come and go at different times. Some people stay in the marketplace, some people wander from stage to stage. Something, for example, that is wonderful for the area, the Dance Pavilion, the technical director love that not only could you place all those people within the tent, but there's a lot of space on the outside that people don't need to be right there at the stage. There's a lot of movement and freedom. Again, people do not come all at the same time and then leave all at the same time. So, yes, there is a lot of people, and hopefully, they'll be going into our businesses and to our restaurants and whatnot, but it's, I do not believe that it's 80,000 all at the same time. I think it's a...
Yeah, there's just some concern from citizens, when all these people converge at one time, what's gonna happen? It's like John talking about businesses being affected, good effects in some cases.
We had a really wonderful information meeting for local downtown businesses that was well-attended and very positive. We discussed our plans for moving people around, and why stages were placed in certain ways, because they follow walking patterns of people, and their natural walking patterns. They also don't jam people up in a certain area. We also talked about, you know, how businesses, one thing that came up at that business meeting that I'm meeting with Eric Kramer about, is when you have a lot of people inside your business, and then there's a potential for fire code issues. So I am getting back with that business community about that, and they also talked about vending outside their stores, which we strongly encourage. So while, yes, I think there are concerns that will have a lot of people there, and I think once we talk it out and we show the plan, something that someone said at that meeting afterwards was, you know, I heard a lot of doubt, you know, before, and there were a lot of questions, but just from finding out this information, it was, it seemed very clear that there's a lot of organization, a lot of planning to this. And again, they have a track record of doing this for almost eight decades, so they wouldn't put people shoulder-to-shoulder into a place.
May I interject?
Yes, yes, sir.
And first, you mentioned people's names. Can you also mention their agency and their title when you mention them?
Sure.
The last name, I know a lot of people don't know, yes.
Ed Kramer? He's with, he's the...
Eric's the city fire marshal.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. And also, on our agenda, we have people from the county, Mr. Young, Assistant Director of Administration, Mr. David Fitzgerald, Emergency Management, Captain Wilson and Lieutenant Robinson. I would like them to come up front, because I, it's also heads turning when we're talking about things in the county, and it'd be nice to have their input for questions, Mr. Young and somebody from the Sheriff's Department, David from Emergency Management. I don't want to put everything on you, Miss O'Hare, 'cause you're going real fast.
No, oh, I apologize, I'm a fast talker. City girl, hi.
We're still on the National Folk Festival, can you give us some of your thoughts, Mr. Young, and introduce yourself.
Yeah, sure. We'll let everybody introduce themselves.
Yes, please introduce yourself. Everyone should have a mic in front of them.
David Fitzgerald, I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator at Risk Management for Wycomico County.
Lieutenant Tim Robinson with the Sheriff's Office.
I'm Babe Wilson, I'll be half of Sheriff Mike Lewis.
So, yeah, just simply, several weeks ago, I forget when the 101 meeting was, we attended, Council President John Cannon attended for at least the first part of it. A presentation was given that kind of laid what's involved with it. I don't know the gentleman's name, but the National Folk Festival comes with a logistic coordinator. He really laid out what needs to happen in terms of, you know, transportation, for example, for the artist, getting him from the airport to the hotel, hotel to the site, and then given traffic's gonna be severely limited, if not excluded, within the boundary, how do you get the artist to the stage with their equipment and all of that? So there's a lot of inner workings of the event to make it work. As far as the county's efforts, you know, we haven't had any real asks at the moment, so we're waiting for the requests of what they need from us. So when we get those specifics, then we can work on that, but...
You haven't had any questions, asks?
I mean, we've been invited to what meetings they have, but...
One of the questions that I've been asked is to get a number for the budget for the county, and I am speaking with NCTA and trying to find out what is a real number, rather than overshooting. Again, I know that we have sheriff representation here. I understand that they will obviously be involved, as well as EMTs and whatnot, and outside possible ambulance services. However, I don't have those exacts, and I feel that that would be not helpful to be like, "Well, I know we're gonna need you for something," but I can't tell you exactly what it is right now, since we're still laying down foundation of where things are, if, you know, which satellite, bless you, which satellite location that we'll be using and whatnot. I'm hoping that by mid-March, that we would have more definitive plans, but I know that that ask is out there, and I know that the Sheriff's Department also needs to be more filled in on what's going on. I am hoping that they can join us for the next action plan meeting with Chief Hoppus and with Chief Duncan, Tom Stevenson, sorry, let me say these names again, I know how you say it, Chief Hoppus and who's fire, Fire Chief, Chief Duncan, Police Chief, Salisbury Police Chief, Tom Stevenson, Director of Public Works, Allison Poulter, Deputy Admini... Sorry. I am talking way too fast.
You were doing good.
I was doing well, until it all fell apart. Allison, obviously, with the Mayor's Office, and myself. But bringing you in, so that we can have that planned, the last time we were here, met, which was almost a month ago, Dwayne Winters, who is the NCTA Technical Director, who is the one that gave that presentation, Festival 101, he sat down and did the logistics with those, with Chief Duncan and Chief Hoppus, and I think having you in that discussion would be incredibly helpful, because I know that you guys know that there's gonna be some involvement, and we need to be communicating better with you on that.
Well, on that, you mentioned something about using the Civic Center parking lot. Has that been talked about with the county? I mean, even just something that small, okay.
No, that has not been talked to the county about yet.
May I interject if I may, Captain Wilson?
Yes, we have Board of Education, we'll also have their onsite football games going that weekend, and that also plays a role for Friday and Saturday in regards to that Civic Center being used. So that's something you need to plan for, that oftentimes, our overflow parking is used in the Civic Center, and it does become quite difficult to exit vehicles out when you have about 1,500 people at the stadium.
Right, so my understanding, the Sheriff's Office is already gonna be busy that weekend, so the earlier we talk to them, I think, is the most helpful.
Yeah, we've not been included yet on the planning stage. I'm happy to hear that there's some discussion for us to come in on the next meeting that you have.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know, I love music, I'm a music lover. In fact, we were talking out in the hall about some of the bands...
Too skinny.
But anyway, you know, my concern is what I've been hearing from the citizens, and I'll ask you folks this, you know, on the county side, if you put 60,000 to 80,000 people in a small, small area in Salisbury on a weekend, now, the young lady on the left said that it didn't start until six, well, the bands have gotta be there, the bands have gotta be set up, the vendors have gotta be set up, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be busy before six o'clock, you know, it's not just, not like you're gonna turn a switch at six and everything just starts. And I know the Sheriff's Department is taxed as it is with the crime that's going on, and football games and other things, and I guess my concern is the safety of our citizens and the inconvenience it's gonna cause, calls to a lot of our citizens in their normal, everyday life. And are we gonna be able to handle that? Will the Sheriff's Department be able to handle that?
I think once we get an opportunity to see what the plan of action is for them and their critical response to it, we can have a better gauge of what the venue should present. But until then, I would hate to give an answer as to what it will be, I don't have the information available.
Would there be any recommendations coming back to the Folk Festival about crowd sizes and things like that?
Certainly on that part, absolutely.
About what you can handle and what you can do?
Yes, we, once we find out, as mirroring what the Captain Wilson said, we've had zero discussions about this, so we would have to find out what exactly they're gonna be asking from us, and how we could possibly assist.
And budgeting, who's gonna pay for it?
I know that when we met with Bob Culver, he also brought up who would be paying for Sheriff, so, yep, that is something to consider as well.
I don't see an offer on the table. All I've heard is everything's free. That's all I've heard since we started.
Free to attend, not free to put on, but free to attend.
Mr. Fitzgerald's here from Emergency Management, I know he's well-versed in crowd management and potential emergencies with large numbers of people. Do you have any concerns, David?
Just like she said, we need to be included at the table, you know, our department's responsible for the 911 center, even though it's in the city, we're still responsible for the emergency management and the overall resources of the county. So we need to be a key player at the table. We did attend the one meeting, and if they get their instant action plan, it's gonna help the Sheriff's Office and help our fire EMS, so we definitely need to get planning sooner than later.
It sounds like you're gonna need assistance from surrounding fire and EMS as well.
Yes.
Caroline, if I could interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Fitzgerald has been in contact with Chief Hoppus and part of our Unified Command discussions, as has the NCTA and a number of us in different capacities. Most of the police draw will be from the city, because, just because it's a city footprint. We do not anticipate a large sheriff ask, but we, again, wanna have those numbers pretty specified before we throw a number at you, and have some backup proof of why we need what we need. I would love to ask for the entire Sheriff's Department just to have, but I don't know that we, that that is absolutely not gonna be a requirement, so we're just trying to nail down those numbers and those expectations to be as fair and taxpayer responsible as we can. And we have been so appreciative of the county's reach out for asking of what they can do and how they can support, and what the expectations are. We are working to get you those answers in as efficient a manner as we possibly can, but also leaning on accuracy. We wanna be right when we make the asks and when we ask for the conversations. That sort of leads me to this, and I wanna give these to you before you ask any more questions. So there is an event tomorrow evening that we are putting together at Salisbury University. We would love all of the council, county executive, anyone that would like to be a part of it. It may ask, answer some of these questions in a more intimate way than you've had the opportunity to have before. You will get to speak with Julia Olin, who is the Executive Director of the National Council of Traditional Arts, so she is the be-all, end-all, know-all of the Folk Festival, and she's helped to pull it off for 77 years, so we have a lot of confidence in her expertise on the matter. You can speak directly with Caroline. Any of those questions that are capable of being answered right now, we are happy to do so, but I did bring these invitations, we wanted to hand-deliver them, and again, we know that sometimes the complexity of a city-county relationship is complex, but we are so appreciative of the reach out on, from your end to our end, to pull this off. We really do appreciate it, and each of you. The questions that you've asked have been incredible and insightful, which lets us know how much you're dedicated to the endeavor and really wanna be a part of it. So I will leave these, and I'll pass them out if there are any more questions.
I do have a question.
Yes.
This is, it sounds like some exciting times for everybody in the area, and you did mention the footprint, the police department, and since they're here, are you guys working on a Plan B, just in case something happens?
We have Plan A through F.
You do?
I don't know that F is the stopping point, but there is more than one plan, and they're working on the Unified Command and what all that looks like, and who those participants are, what the expectation of each participant is, of course, according to NIMS and all of those emergency management things. And Dave has been sort of a part of that discussion. He will become an absolute necessity part of that discussion as we get those details.
Okay. Any more questions?
Please join us tomorrow, I, we look forward to seeing you.
I do wanna be there. Anyone else? Do you have anything else to offer on the Folk Festival?
No, but I look forward to working more closely with the county.
Any more comments from the county side? Can we talk about the marathon now?
That's an Andy discussion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Allison.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councilman?
Morning.
Morning, morning. I'm Andy Kitsero, Deputy City Administrator, and I'll be talking about the marathon. I'm not sure if you want Dallas to join us up here, since he's integral...
If he would like to.
We've got the hot seat over here, Dallas. So a couple pieces with the marathon. For those who don't know, it's April 28th, it's coming up on us quickly. We've had more intense conversations, detailed conversations with the county, specifically the gentleman around this table with me, primarily around traffic control, because more than half of the race is on county roads, and will be spilling into the greater county area on the south side, past Fruitland and Upper Ferry. We have been working with Public Works, Dallas and Weston, to provide a traffic control plan through our GIS Department, that is going to allow people to know what traffic controls are happening, directional traffic, how we're gonna be flagging the course, have law enforcement, et cetera. Once that is finalized, and we're really close to that, we're gonna be having viewers on our website, so people who live in the affected areas will know what the traffic control plan's going to be, also what the maps are going to look like, so that they can adjust their day accordingly. Also, on March 1st, we are having a public town hall meeting here in this, in this room, and we're gonna be sending out information on that, so that people who do have some concerns, whether they're citizens living in the affected areas or just in the course overall, we will have that as a Q and A, similar to what we did with the Folk Festival.
What time?
Six o'clock. And again, what we're gonna be doing is continuing to reach out to the people in the affected areas, talking to them about traffic control and the traffic flow, et cetera. It is a big lift for traffic. In the city streets, we'll be having our city law enforcement. Once we roll into the county, we're asking the Sheriff's Department to participate in traffic control. We don't think we're the Maryland State Police very much on the route, but we may, if necessary. And there will be compensation, of course. One of the pieces is Dallas, if you, if you guys want to ask some questions, he can talk to you about how the traffic control will be impacted in the county, but then we also have some gentlemen from the Sheriff's Department who are aware of that. We've started our Unified Command meetings for the marathon, and we have another one coming up on March 6th, and that is just to discuss all the logistics, including traffic, and then just the whole footprint and the impact it's gonna have. I can get into more details about the event, but I'm gonna open it up for questions at this time.
How many people do you anticipate for this event?
We are, we have 500 people registered right now, we think that'll double, so about 1,000 registrants. Usually, that comes with one to two additional bodies per runner, so about 3,000 throughout the day downtown.
How many hours will this event take place, and the roads be tied up, so citizens will be affected?
Okay, so around seven o'clock, we'll start seeing some adjustments to the traffic control on city and county roads. The footprint downtown will be impacted before that, with some setup on Friday. The race technically ends around four, is when the last runner should be coming in. It's an eight-hour course, starting at eight.
Probably me.
Yeah, it's a good slow pace. We have what is considered a rolling marathon, where as the last person hits different parts, we're picking up cones and moving and just, changing the traffic back to the way it's supposed to be. So parts of the course will be two hours, then you'll be done. So you'll see that happening, that's also with our water stations and our flaggers, as the course completes, certain areas will be breaking down.
So this is similar to the bicycle race?
Similar to... Yep, to the Segal Century, yeah, you'll have a very similar impact. We have a lot of different literature and signage that'll be put out, a lot, I think it was like over 4,000 cones that we're bringing in. For those who don't know, this type of event is managed by a race director, Jason Chance. He's not here today, but he is managing the actual race coordination, but we also work with a company that we hire, who puts on marathons, so they do all the, the cone-in and all of the traffic, and they bring a whole team with them to run that. So it's not me trying to figure it out, we have professionals that we've brought in to manage the actual course.
You mentioned this is gonna be downed by Upper Ferry?
South Upper Ferry, uh-huh.
Yeah, are you, have you been in contact with the Allen Fire Department, are they a part of this?
Yeah, Chief Hoppus has reached out to the Allen Fire Department, and we've invited them to the March 6th meeting.
I'm assuming you're gonna meet with us again for another presentation. I think an overhead map would be nice to map out the route, so that we could see it and all the participants could see, so that we know which roads would be closed for a certain amount of time.
Sure, you send out the invitation, I can come out, and we can fire it up on the laptop.
I think at the March 1st informational meeting, they'll be doing that as well.
Okay.
And I believe there's two other meetings, I believe Jason said there'll be at least two other informational meetings after the March 1st for citizens to attend.
That's correct, into March, and one about two weeks out.
Captain Wilson, how's this gonna affect the Sheriff's Department and your staffing as well?
I would defer to Lieutenant Robinson, he's been involved with it.
Thank you.
Yes, I've been having many discussions, both with the city, Unified Command, and also the race director, Jason Chance, and we, we've been starting, we started our meetings probably back in September. I've also been meeting with my counterpart over at the city police in reference to this. We anticipate probably having anywhere between a dozen to 15 deputies staffing this event, the, which we're gonna, bringing them in on an overtime... which we're going, bringing them in on an overtime basis, and we'll be compensated back for that. We have also reached out to the Waukesha County Fire Police. They have graciously volunteered to assist specifically on Riverside Drive, and we're going to work with them there and station them with deputies and volunteers. We're confident that we're going to be able, not only pull this off, but we're going to have a successful event.
Sounds good. David, do you have anything?
The only thing we've been asked for, for the marathon, is to assist with communications, the county's mobile command post. So emergency management staff will staff that along with our radio division staff, and as they mentioned at the same meeting, Lieutenant Robinson, we're just build back, build the city back for the event, back for those expenses.
The only other piece I'd like to add is we're having a lot of community support so far for this event. It's really exciting. Salisbury University, we're running right across their campus, so they're heavily involved. We're going to be using some of their athletic training program students to assisting at the water stations to provide additional aid if necessary.
Good idea.
We also have talked with PRMC, and they're coming on. Not only they're providing us a medical director, what you need at marathons at the end of the race, they're also going to be providing us over 100 volunteers throughout the entire course to be our course flagger. So we have one group that is going to be managing that. And for those who don't know, on a marathon, the way that it runs is your flaggers direct the race participants where to run, where to turn, and then law enforcement directs traffic, so you don't have two people trying to do the same thing, kind of keep it separate. So we're really excited about that.
John Hall.
Andy, can we explain the funding and the funding sources?
Yes, so majority of the funding will come from registration entries. So you have anywhere from the 5K run, which will cost you $30, $35, up to the marathon, which is right now at $115. So we have a marathon, a half marathon, and a 5K race that people can register for. We also have several sponsors who've come on board to assist with this event, and that's going to help offset additional costs. And then at our Finish Line Festival, there'll be some alcohol sales that will, that will go into that. Just to let everybody know, the city is not a beneficiary of this event at all. All of the money is being given back to three different nonprofits. ASA, which is Athletes Serving Athletes, Life Crisis Centers come on. They have a Pin Wheels for Protection program that they run, so they're managing the 5K. Then our Eastern Shore Runners Club, they're helping out with the event, so they're receiving the proceeds.
What are your major expenses, and how do they impact the county?
The major expenses is probably bringing, our biggest expense will be bringing in the professional people who set up the course. That whole course management is several thousand dollars. It's not necessarily going to impact the county directly. Again, the lift that we're asking for from the county is going to be law enforcement from the Sheriff's Office, and we will be compensating back for that overtime. There has been a request sent over to the Waukesha County Tourism Department to utilize their stage for this event at our finish line. We have AMP who's located downtown. They're going to be doing some performance throughout the day, and we've asked them for the stage and also to waive the fee, the rental fee for that.
Andy, is that traffic control, is that still coming out of Wisconsin?
Yes.
And this sounds like a pre-qualifier for bigger races.
Yeah, definitely. So this is a qualified course. We had to get it certified, but if you race and you are fast enough, so Councilman Holloway, if you're fast enough, you can run the Boston. Okay. Yeah. It is a certified Boston qualifier and a half, New York half marathon qualifier.
I'm going to have my runs when somebody's chasing me.
Any more questions? I have a question real quick. I'm going to get ready to say something. Parking, you're expecting maybe 1,000 or more people. Where are they going to park, and is shuttling necessary?
Good question. So the starting point is going to be on the south side of, or the north side of the city park, kind of over by the fountain. That's the best location to put. We're asking everybody to park downtown in the parking garage or in Lot 1. There will be shuttles available. It is a short walk, so most people will probably walk over to the starting line because the finish line will be downtown on the plaza. However, because this is an ASA course, we have a lot of people who are going to be handicapped and wheelchair-bound. We are going to be partnering, hopefully, with establishment everywhere, Davis, Bowen, Fidelis, to utilize their parking lot as a shuttle drop-off so we can shuttle people from Lot 1 and Lot 11 over there, drop them off, and then bring them back if necessary. So we will see that, and we're going to be working, hopefully, with Shore Transit as an opportunity for the shuttling.
For their shuttle buses. Okay. Any more questions? Andy, do you have any more?
I just, again, since we're here at the county council, I appreciate the county council, and specifically Executive Culver and his team here from the county with being a partner of the event, and all the departments who have helped out. I know these are always trying times when we're asking to disrupt traffic flow and people stayed today, but I think it is a great community event, and it's going to bring a lot of public opinion from people coming in from the outside into the area. I think this is another opportunity for us to have a success in the city and county for an event, so again, I thank you guys for helping out.
Thank you for being here.
You did say that you would be reimbursing for overtime to the Sheriff's Office from the city, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's the most important. Any more questions? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're getting ready to go into an administrative closed session to meet with the internal auditor for some updates on his projects or their projects. Thank you, everyone, for attending. That concludes the legislative session.